Okay, good evening and thank you for viewing the August tenth, twenty twenty one meeting of the Planning Commission. We are holding this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID nineteen virus. I want to start by thanking the community and visitors to Arcata and the county for their efforts to slow the spread of COVID nineteen. Remember the three most important things you can do to protect yourself and others in the community are masking up, practicing social distance of six feet or more and washing your hands regularly. These fundamental acts of social responsibility will help flatten the curve, keep ourselves and neighbors healthy and keep our businesses open. Importantly, these measures show support for frontline and essential workers that serve us daily. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, there are two ways to do so. First, if you join the webinar on a computer or similar device, click the raised hand icon when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. And second, if you did not log on to the webinar, you may join the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. Dialing star nine will let the clerk know that you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. And with that, we will call this meeting to order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Yeah, Commissioner Davies.
Here.
Commissioner Barstow.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Visaid Alcock.
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Present.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
And Chair Taggney.
Here, thank you. Next, we will move on to oral communications. Director Loia, do you have any communications for us?
There's no one in attendance to to provide oral communications at this time.
Okay, and that moves us on then to the consent calendar and the only item on the consent calendar is approving the minutes from our last meeting. If there are no changes or nobody wants to pull this item, do we have a motion to approve?
I noticed that on the webpage, when I brought up the agenda, I didn't see the minutes on the webpage. So I haven't seen the minutes. So the the action item is basically to accept the minutes into the record. And so even if you were absent on that item, you can you can vote on that if you'd like. Obviously, you can abstain if you feel better doing that. We did have some technical glitches. The agenda was up and it said we were going to meet in person and we had to revise that given the the rapid climb in COVID numbers towards the end of last week and so which is getting the the full agenda up. The agenda should be up now. Okay, I just pulled it not too long ago and I didn't see the minutes on there. So can we still approve them even though they're not available to the public or are they available to the public at this moment? Let me confirm. Yeah, why don't you can I'm not able to get on my computer because I'm on the computer. Yeah, the agenda packet is up and the minutes are attached. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Director Loia, would you do the roll call, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Davies.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow.
Aye.
Commissioner Visaid Alcock.
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Aye.
And Chair Taggney.
I I wasn't here for that meeting. I'll just abstain on that.
Okay, consent calendar is done for the evening and we have no public hearing. So we're going to move on to business items of which we have one. Sorry, we have two, don't we? Um. Pardon me, I've mixed up my pages here. Is the first item, business item, wasn't it to elect chair and vice chair and then we go on to our presentation? So with that, I would like to elect or nominate Julie Visaid Alcock to be our chair.
So for the commissioners, just the some of you have not done this process before and for those of the others of you, it's been a year. And so it runs like a typical planning commission approval process where there's a the nomination is basically a motion and that motion would be seconded. You can either elect chair and vice chair in the same motion or chair and vice chair separately. And you could certainly have dialogue and discussion between, you know, a motion and or a vote.
That said, then I would like to go ahead and also nominate Judith Mayor to be vice chair if we save a little time and do one motion for both. If there's a second on that, we can move forward. If there isn't, throw out your ideas, please.
I'll second Dan.
So there's a motion.
A motion and a second, I believe Commissioner Barstow has a question or statement.
Oh, well, you beat me to it on the second. I was going to second that also.
Okay, so we'll need a roll call vote on that?
Okay. Commissioner Davies.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Visaid Alcock.
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow.
Aye.
And Commissioner Figueroa.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Aye.
And Chair Taggney.
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Well, congratulations all.
Yes. And then the second business item here is to pursue our study session for the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program.
Right, I think you and I guess it's it's up to you if you want to turn the chair over to now Chair Visaid Alcock immediately, or if you want to continue to chair the rest of the meeting. Just note that as a procedural step.
I just got a signal from Julie that she would rather wait.
Okay, she's gonna have you finish. Okay, great. Yeah.
Judith has.
And so tonight.
There's a hand raise. Judith.
Before we move on to the next business item, I'm I'm just wondering if we can all thank Dan Taggney for being an absolutely terrific commission chair for all of these years and welcome Julie.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Judith.
Despite the COVID.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, you know, Dan, I think Rob, who, as you know, was chair before you, really set the bar. And so you've fallen short because I think I think he was chair for like twelve years or something like that.
I know, he was a model. Thinking of him in the back of my mind.
But yes, thank you for all your service. It's been great working with you as chair and looking forward to shifting positions.
Yeah, I think it's great to rotate it around. All right. Business business item number two is all you, David.
Okay, yeah, lucky for you all, it's not just all me and Senior Planner Freitas is on. She's going to take the first part of this. She's going to update you a little bit on where we're at with some of the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program outreach and engagement. And then I've got a fairly short presentation with a little bit of engagement planned for the end and you know, we can take as much time or as little time as necessary or as your as your as you desire. I'm going to share the screens that I hope Dila will want me to share to help navigate you to our outreach that she's going to be discussing.
Okay, thank you. And so mostly what I'm going to be talking about is the survey and the results that we've gotten so far. If you scroll down on this page to get involved, you can see the visioning survey and meeting in a box down here in the body of the text. And if you have not yet taken this survey, I would strongly encourage you to do so and send it to all of your friends. It takes about twenty minutes or less, if you're familiar with some of the materials, which you all are. And it asks questions basically about your vision for Arcata, what you see as Arcata's values and what you think we should prioritize as we as we update the general plan and what sort of tact we should take with considering how to accommodate growth and development in the city. And we have one hundred and sixty seven responses so far. And we want to keep it open through the end of the year. We want to make sure that we have as many H S U students as possible take this survey. We haven't had many yet. But we are planning to do what we can to aggressively promote it when the students come back at the end of this month. And I know some of the professors have already offered to offer it to their classes as extra credit. And some of the results that we have gotten so far, I'm not going to share any specifics, but you know, the major themes, I would say growth and change are definitely coming out. We have a few people who are, you know, concerned about changes to small town character, changing the things that they, you know, really appreciate and love about Arcata, but most people are really interested in seeing infill. The word infill came up four or five times in free answer questions, which I see as being a great sign. It means that the the wording is getting out there and people are hearing about what we're doing and they're excited. And synergies with H S U has come up a lot. I think the polytechnic is definitely on people's minds and I think that it is really going to pave the way for a lot of the work that we're doing, updating the zoning and talking about density and infill. Transportation and housing also came up a lot, as well as economic development and more diverse representation in government and decision making. And generally, just a real interest from people in being welcoming, inclusive and innovative. And hopefully, with the close of the survey at the end of the year, we'll release all of the respondents' answers verbatim so you can explore them yourself and and hear what your fellow community had to say. It's really been really interesting hearing everyone's responses to what they think Arcata's values are and what they see for the vision of this city. So definitely want to encourage you to get the word out on that and stay tuned for more. And we will be planning our next big community town hall with the release of the Gateway Plan Draft, which will be happening in the next few months. So we kind of are going to be closing out one cycle of engagement and moving on to more engagement as we have the draft plan available for review. And then we start digging into some of the other elements of the general plan as well. So I think that's basically what I had. Let me know, David, if you had anything else you wanted to make sure that I covered.
Dila, I have a quick question.
Yeah, no, that was that was great.
Okay, yeah.
Are you encouraging county residents as much as you are city of Arcata residents to take this?
Yeah, so so far we've had about seventy percent respondents who live within city limits, but we have a pretty wide variety of respondents, some people who wish they could live in Arcata but can't, some people who prefer the place they call home, but it's open to anyone and everyone who has an opinion about the way Arcata should grow and develop and who has an interest in seeing it done well. So it's not, it's not, it's not something that we have kept to only current city residents. And we have a lot of respondents from McKinleyville and Eureka and people who at one time went to H S U or lived here, but for whatever reason weren't able to stay.
And I want to remind the commission, you know, in that vein, that you know, the the planning work we're doing, we're planning for people who aren't here. You know, these are housing units that don't exist yet that we're planning for. These are jobs that don't exist that we're planning for. You know, these are new parks that don't exist yet. And so, you know, planning is is oftentimes looking in the rearview mirror, asking the people who are already here, what is it that you want? And they're already here, they've already got it. And generally, their answer is, I want what we have. I don't want it to change. And as you all know, through the engagement that we've gone through to date, that there are a lot of people who are left out of this process as a result. And so our our outreach effort really does try and you know, reach out to people who don't currently live in Arcata but wish they could, or people who work in Arcata, don't live here and have an opinion about the way that, you know, the community should develop. And so it's it's been a very broad strategy and, you know, certainly, you know, when when you're making your decisions, you certainly need to take that into consideration, but I think keeping it in the forefront of your mind that we're planning for people who aren't here. So if we ask the people who are here, what it should be like, generally, the answer is going to be just like it is.
Because it's such a great, it's a great place. One other thing I will add to that is that almost all of the survey questions are optional. There are only two that are required and one is, do you live in Arcata? And then there are some other options. And the second is, have you been engaged in any of our previous engagement work? Have you been involved with the housing element? Did you go to any of our visioning sessions? And those are the only two required questions that we ask to kind of get a better sense of who is responding to our questions.
I would like to say that I could easily be promoting this through, you know, my email or text lists or something, and I will. I I'm glad you asked because this would be an easy one to ask friends and family and such to spend the twenty minutes and take it.
You could even tell them it's fifteen.
Okay.
They just kind of like, you know, run the numbers down. And we also have it available in Spanish for anyone who wants to get it out to communities who would prefer to take it in Spanish.
All right, thank you for that. And again, the survey is open through the end of the year. And it's on our website. So you can Google S I R P and Arcata and you'll find it. All right, I wanted to, Dila had mentioned the Arcata Gateway Plan that we're currently working at Break Next Speed on with Plan West Partners, our our consultant and ally in bringing this plan to the community. And so I wanted to update you on where we're at. It's at the very beginnings of this work, but there's some some work product that we want to share and and just a little bit of framing that we want to make sure that everyone's on board with and understands. And again, I'm not starting at the beginning. I'm starting kind of in the middle. So feel free if you've, you know, if you don't remember, you know, something or if something seems foreign to you, please stop me and ask me. All of this, all of these concepts have years, literally years of public engagement that back the conclusions of the direction that we're heading. We've constantly consistently gotten affirmation from you all, the planning commission, as well as city council and many of the committees for this work. And so I don't want, I'm, you know, I hope that this doesn't cause a shock to you, but I do want to make sure that everybody has the option and opportunity to say, okay, hold on a second. How did you get there? Because some of this, I'm kind of jumping right in the middle. I just want to be upfront about that. All right, I'm going to share my PowerPoint presentation and my first question for you is to make sure that you're seeing the full screen and not the the screen with the notes. I believe you are, but someone confirm that for me.
It looks like a half screen to me. I don't know if others are seeing that. But it's cut off. Oh, there we go.
Okay, it's working now?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so update on the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program, or specifically what we're doing right now with one of the planning documents that falls under the program, the Arcata Gateway Plan. Now, it's kind of funny as I was looking back through earlier presentations. I found one from two thousand nine where, you know, I started off the presentation, hey, let's talk about the elephant in the room. And I mentioned, you know, H S U and and the impact that H S U has on housing and so on and so forth. And I think as Dila had alluded to, you know, now we're looking at a situation where H S U isn't the elephant in the room. It's actually the elephant is the room. And so we have multiple factors going on right now that are really exacerbating an already extreme problem with housing in the city of Arcata. And there doesn't appear to be an end in sight. This isn't just a blip. It's not a, you know, temporary, you know, boom bus cycle. We're on a trajectory right now and I've talked with several folks that are in the real estate business, talked to several people who are looking for homes, who recently purchased homes, folks at H S U, so on and so forth. But we've got not only H S U is, you know, generating a polytechnic, which will about double what their highest student body was at any time in the recent past. But we've also got, you know, climate refugees that are coming to our area in droves. We have people who with the freedom of remote working are coming to our area in droves. People who are cashing out of, you know, higher rent districts like L A and San Francisco, where they're being able to come to our community and offer cash on a house at prices that are higher than they're asking. And so there's, you know, a significant pressure on our community right now and that that pressure will only be exacerbated over time as time goes on. We did do the housing element and our housing needs assessment and our big plans inventory. We identified a very minimum of two hundred and eleven units that were unmet. And so this plan that we're working on is in partial response to that. We had committed in the housing element, the Housing Community Development Department of State certified our housing element on the basis of doing this rezoning work that we're currently engaged in. And so a lot of the public engagement started with the housing element. We carried through what we are hearing in the housing element, a lot of lessons learned from some recent large scale projects. I start twitching when I say one of the names of them, so I won't mention it. But but the community learned a lot from that work and, you know, and so did our department. And so one of the proposals that came out was to target certain areas, you know, we we see Valley West, the Craftsman Mall area and the neighborhood surrounding it, And so one of the proposals that came out was to target certain areas. You know, we we see Valley West, the Craftsman Mall area and the neighborhood surrounding it, uh, the downtown and uh, the current gateway, we were then calling the K Street Corridor uh, as opportunities for increasing housing development and streamlining. So again, we're talking specifically about the area surrounding uh, K Street Corridor, the Creamery District at the center, uh, up through Alliance and out to Samoa Boulevard. These boundaries aren't fixed. We're still working through the detail, but this is the general area that we're talking about. This area, as you can see in the right hand uh, side of the frame, is all purple and pink. Purple and pink in our current zoning means that it's industrial limited or industrial general zoned properties. So what this means is that, you know, those areas were identified as uh, industrial and we all know that they've converted just naturally. The market has converted them over time. And we've seen a lot of uh, really creative uh, you know, reuse of sites out there. So we're trying to uh, sort of take back this area and repurpose it, reimagine it, uh, create some some value in the land that isn't currently there because of uh, existing zoning and really strive for and encourage uh, the higher density development that we're looking for in the future. So that was the origin of it. The Arcata Gateway Plan is kind of a two-piece plan. The first part of it is a general plan element. Now, the general plan, you're all aware, lays out the policy, uh, the land uses and the implementation measures to achieve those policy objectives. Um, so the Arcata Gateway Plan is going to focus in on this area that we've outlined as having high potential for development. And it's going to develop a body of policy that's real specific to that area. The reason for doing this is because the general plan that applies citywide that affects, you know, forest hillsides, the same as it affects, you know, the bottom lands, uh, the same as it affects uh, you know, the the bay and the lands that are out uh, in the agricultural portions of our bottom lands. Those policies are all diverse and very uh, general. Um, we want to be able to target development for this area. And so we're really honing in on what are the specific policies uh, and objectives for this area. There are some real opportunities in this area. Uh, it's walking distance of the plaza, for example. It's walking distance of uh, the boundary of HSU. Um, there are lots of uh, job opportunities that were in, within walking distance of it. And it also has uh, you know, world-class trail system running through the center of it. So there's a lot of work to do on uh, you know, the the general policy direction and that'll fall into an element of the general plan. The second part of the Gateway Plan uh, drops down in detail from what we'll find in the general plan element and is going to be more of a form-based code. I don't want to promise that it's a hundred percent going to be form-based code. There are some uh, pros and cons with adopting form-based codes and we're still working through the details of how we uh, get at the objectives of this planning effort. Uh, the most efficient process possible. But ultimately, the objective is to result in principally permitted high-density development. And so on the one extreme, what we have currently in this conventional zoning situation, where you use various site standards like density, uh, use, floor area ratio setbacks and et cetera to regulate development. And then you uh, you know, once you put in those outside parameters on them, uh, you let the, you know, the developers come in on a one-off basis and propose something, generally speaking, dependent on the use, you take them through a planning process. And, you know, the public gets to uh, you know, whittle away at one-off projects uh, with their, you know, community desires. And it's not an integrated, uh, well-thought-out uh, community-wide uh, plan. On the opposite end of the spectrum, form-based codes provide very specific detail on, you know, building types, the form of those buildings, uh, you know, how they will interact with the the public ride of ways, for example, and with each other. Um, and these are very detailed codes that um, oftentimes result in a more uh, integrated, uh, thoughtful uh, uh, approach. Um, sometimes these are so prescriptive that they may have the effect of of stifling the type of development that you want. So um, if I were to, if I were to hazard a guess at this point, I think what's going to, where we're going to land for what's right for Arcata is somewhere in the middle, somewhat on the form-based code side of zoning and design guidelines with fewer restrictions on use types and more emphasis on what the built environment is going to look like. I'm going to pause there for a minute because this has been quite a bit and see if there are any questions. Okay, oh, uh, Commissioner, Vice Chair Mayor.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm wondering as, as this process proceeds, um, there are a number of sites um, in that area uh, that either don't or are adjacent to areas that don't actually have full city infrastructure. Um, at this point, some of those industrial areas. Um, for example, you know, don't, don't have uh, a lot in the way of sewer service, for example. Um, and I'm wondering as as these plans call for particular mixes of uses, how we're going to be looking at effects on our need for infrastructure, um, costs and the risk that we're actually going to overload. Um, what we have based on the schedules for upgrading things uh, that might not jive with uh, the, the developer's desires to build. Is that going to be a part of this process and are there going to be requirements for um, infrastructure in place before developments will be considered?
Yeah, it's a, a really good series of questions. Um, the short answer is yes. Um, there's absolutely a uh, infrastructure component to the planning work we're doing right now. And recall that this uh, Arcata Gateway Plan is also nested within uh, the larger infill plan, which has updates to the general plan. Uh, the larger body of of work, the general plan. And all of that is going to be assessed uh, for its environmental impact or its uh, you know, uh, infrastructure impacts. Um, uh, you know, parking, circulation, traffic, the whole thing. And that'll be analyzed in one document, um, so that it, you know, all the cumulative effects can be uh, evaluated at the same time. The infrastructure planning for sort of maximum build-out in these areas will be included. And um, there will be uh, certainly a requirement that uh, the infrastructure is scaled appropriately to the development. There's, there's no way we can build before, for example, there's enough uh, you know, water infrastructure to provide water for those, those new developments or sewer infrastructure for those new developments. And so the short answer is yes.
Okay, and so you mentioned that the um, environmental impact reviews would be done on one document. Uh, so what you're saying is that the Arcata Gateway, the infill plan and presumably since we don't have it yet, the uh, local coastal program are all going to be reviewed pretty much simultaneously in terms of uh, cumulative impact? We, we still don't have the local coastal coastal program. And so if these are all happening at once, we're looking at cumulative impacts of all of them, correct?
Yeah, and fortunately because of the, you know, the area that we're planning in, you know, really does overlap um, the, you know, the the cumulative effects, if you will, they're, they're actually just the same effects. And so, for example, uh, half this area roughly uh, is in the coastal zone. If you look at the blue dotted line that zigzags through the center, uh, that separates the inland portion uh, on the north side of the blue line from the coastal portion on the south side of the blue line. And so the environmental work considers the zoning changes that happen in here. These zoning changes will ultimately get submitted to the Coastal Commission for uh, local coastal program update amendment. So there's no new impact associated with it. It's the impact that we've already studied. Um, I can't guarantee that the coastal uh, planning and the, and this planning will uh, align a hundred percent with the timelines. Uh, but I, I can't tell you that obviously we, we understand that both these planning efforts are happening simultaneously. So we'll consider the uh, the changes that are happening in each of the documents. Any other thoughts before we move on? Okay.
Uh, I have a written in question, David, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, is there electric vehicle infrastructure that's starting to become a norm in, you know, a big build-out in a new area like this?
Yeah, I, part of a huge emphasis actually uh, of both the public outreach that we've received and um, you know, our internal planning is on alternative transportation. Um, and so uh, in addition to the, so, and so, you know, electric charging is is a part of that. In addition to that, the building code is changing. Um, and, you know, there's a three-year updates and then there are the, the updates to uh, the electric code periodically. Um, and my understanding is that, you know, electric charging is going to be required in certain sized developments. And I think each of these will qualify. And so one of the benefits of um, you know, of doing this, this sort of broader planning effort uh, is that you can take that comprehensively and say, these are where, you know, we need charging stations relative to these other activities or these other uses that are going on in the town or these other planned uses that that will happen eventually. Um, and certainly, um, you know, certainly electric charging is an important element of, you know, uh, carbon neutrality and and our adaptation uh, policy, but so is um, you know, other means of alternative transportation. And so we're taking all of those into consideration when we uh, make this plan.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, absolutely. So feel free just to pipe in. I'm going to actually uh, move you all to my other screen over here. So I won't see you probably if you wait, raise your hand. Okay, so I just wanted to jump into a little bit about the structure and organization of the plan at this point. Um, this is a little bit fluid, but we're honing in enough to where I feel like I can share it. Um, and and start to get some, some feedback from you as decision makers. So this is the outline uh, as we currently have it. Most fleshed out is sort of the introduction and the, the vision. I'm going to spend a little bit of time going into the vision here, um, because that's what we have most well-developed. Um, and it's really, again, based on uh, a pretty extensive engagement. Um, but it's, you know, it's really down here is when you get into uh, some of the, the form-based code stuff and the implementation. And then we have a whole background of information that we'll bring forward to contextualize this and provide the policy framework. Um, as Dilo had mentioned, we've been working through the vision, visioning. Uh, we've done a lot of work um, to engage the community. Uh, the current survey that Dilo had mentioned is, is reaffirming a lot of what we've been, um, you know, hearing from the community previously. And so we're, we're starting kind of at the highest level and saying, hey, what are our guiding principles? And again, this is based on community input and input from leaders as well as, you know, movements that the, the state is making us do. Uh, you know, Dilo had brought up and elevated this idea that uh, you know, some people are reluctant to see the community change. Uh, they like the small-town character. They like the rural character. Um, they like things the way that they are. And, you know, change is, change is scary. Uh, change is um, you know, difficult to absorb. Um, and a lot of the change that we are planning for right now is, is change that we realize is going to happen whether we like it or not. Uh, and that the state is going to force us into it if we don't uh, take control and and plan for it ourselves. And so, you know, one of the key take-home messages, and I want everybody on the Planning Commission and everyone in the community to be absolutely crystal clear on this, is that status quo is not an option. We've identified several negative detractors to our community, or negative, negative impacts to our community rather, as a result of status quo, especially moving forward. Um, if, you know, as the uh, you know, the markets continue to pressurize our housing markets and in our, our economic markets. And so Arcata is going to change. I want everybody to be crystal clear on that. And now is our chance to work as a community to form that change, to shape that change and to uh, have a say into, you know, what that change looks like. Uh, the other thing that I want people to be really absolutely a hundred percent crystal clear on is that uh, that change is going to reflect as very large-scale buildings. Uh, we've got, you know, the old Isaacson's Lot, which was a vacant, vacant lot after having been a car lot for decades. Um, and right now a four-story building is going up in that, that parking lot. Um, and that is, you know, there's more to come. We're going to see more of that. And the community needs to, you know, think about how do we, how do we embrace that change and how do we help shape that change? So infill and high-density housing is a key guiding principle. Um, and this is not only because the housing element says, hey, we need to have a certain number of units. I think that, you know, that falls on deaf ears for a lot of people. The state's telling you, you have to have, you know, six hundred and eleven units. And so we're planning for them. The reality is that if you go and talk to any of our major employers in the area, they'll tell you stories of woe of losing employees because they're losing their housing right now. These are people with good, well-paying jobs, long-term, well-paying jobs that are losing their house. They're going homeless because the housing market is so hot right now that the house they're renting, the owner is saying, you know, it's, it's time for me to sell. That's not only impacting that one family. People who have roots in this community. That's impacting the businesses who are now losing employees. The employees are saying, hey, I have to move back home. I, I don't, I can't find a place to live. And so, you know, the infill, high-density housing and mixed uses go hand in hand. But it's not only to support new uses, it's to support existing uses. Um, right at the center of this entire planning effort is racial equity and social justice. Um, there are state laws that require uh, communities that have, uh, just, or jurisdictions that have disadvantaged communities uh, to work through social justice solutions. Um, and there's a whole body of law around that. Uh, we're not required to because we're not technically designated a, a disadvantaged community. Uh, but I'm, I'm, you know, proud to be working with a community that has taken this on as um, uh, you know, as a voluntary uh, effort to ensure that the policies that we create uh, help to break down uh, systemic racism and uh, the impacts of uh, you know, systemic racism. Uh, alternative transportation, as I mentioned earlier, is a core guiding principle. In addition, you know, we're talking about being climate-ready, not only in the new developments, uh, not only in, in the way that they're uh, built out, but also recognizing that due to the impacts of sea level rise and and other uh, climate changes, uh, densification is, is going to be required. People are going to ultimately not be able to live in areas that are subject to sea level rise. We need to start planning for that now. This plan is in partial response to them. Uh, and then in addition, you know, the community investment, we heard a lot uh, in some of the recent uh, large-scale developments came through the Planning Commission about people really desiring to be at the ground floor of that, uh, you know, that planning effort, especially the design effort and wanting to have a say in how these uh, areas are developed. And they wanted to talk regionally. They didn't want to talk about single-site specifics. And so, you know, this is my call out to all those folks that got involved in the Village Project and others to, you know, get involved. Uh, this, this requires community investment and community buy-in. And now is your opportunity. Uh, and then lastly, uh, there's real focus on the arts. Uh, in our vision statement, which I'll share with you in just a second, you know, we recognize the community, the uh, Creamery District, which has a thriving uh, art community and is sort of the focal point of uh, you know, at least a large share of the, the art community in the city of Arcata. Uh, right at its, right at its center. And so we want to, you know, recognize that and uh, leverage that. Uh, we've talked a lot about affordable housing in the past. Um, and we will appreciate our artist community. And one of the concepts here is to do a mashup of those two things and make sure that uh, artists have access to affordable housing right in the district that, you know, um, uh, you know, that speaks to them. So from all those guiding principles, we developed this vision statement. And I'm just going to read it to you. So, because it's, it's excellent. Uh, the Arcata Gateway area is a vibrant, mixed-use, community-oriented blend of trend, transitional neighborhoods with the Creamery District at its physical core and entrepreneurial heart in its community center. The Gateway Plan lifts these values to grow opportunity and build community equitably. It is mixed-use, mixed-tenure, high-density, mixed-income, thoughtfully It is mixed use, mixed tenure, high density, mixed income, thoughtfully designed, festering friendly, community facing, sustainable, equitable redevelopment. So that is the the working principle. And I just want to pause for a moment there. It integrates the concepts that we've heard, you know, over the last four years, three or four years that we've been doing this work and really focuses in on this core concept that the entire plan hinges on growing opportunity and building community equity equitably. Again, I just wanted to pause and see if there are any comments or thoughts.
Sounds like Arcata. It sounds like exactly what we all want. I agree, it's very well written. Good guiding words.
Okay. I'm going to jump next into kind of the participatory portion of this presentation. The next layer, so once we go from guiding principles and we've talked about the vision, the next layer to sort of outline this area, we're framing it as challenges and opportunities. And I hope in the very near future to be able to bring, you know, some content to you around that. We've got some some draft content, but it's not quite ready for prime time. But I just wanted to throw these out there as sort of some some ideas. Some of these we've we've already incorporated into our draft guiding concepts. But I wanted to have a little bit of, you know, dialogue. And again, I want to I want to really encourage you to train your thinking to this area specifically. What can this area do? What are the challenges in this area or what are the challenges that this area can help us solve? And so far, you know, high on the list, obviously, housing need. The area has a lot of what could be considered blight, some antiquated antiquated land uses and other utilized properties. There's historic contamination. There are lots of historic resources in the district and we need to think thoughtfully about how we approach those. I mentioned climate change, racial equity and social justice, and then employment as well. So I just want to open it up into a dialogue around, you know, if these are these are right targets in terms of the challenges and opportunities within this site? Are there others that we haven't really listed here? What are your thoughts?
Regarding the housing need component of this discussion, doesn't the total number of units outlined here still fall woefully short of what we anticipate needing, especially with the polytechnic?
So.
And and I suppose part two is, so is there another effort to address a bigger number?
Yeah, the the number that we're using right now for planning purposes is what some of my colleagues would say laughably high. I had my consultant try and talk me down. And, you know, even even using silly things like math to try and prove his point. Right now, we're using for primarily planning purposes, 3,500 units as the, you know, as the upper limit of total number of housing units that could be created in this district. Just to put that into context, we have about a thousand, historically, we've had about 1,000 units produced a decade in the past. And that's like pretty much throughout Arcata's history. That's an average. So there was a, you know, bump post war bump, but, you know, for the most part, it's been about 1,000 units. I would argue that that looking backwards doesn't necessarily inform the future housing development, in particular because we've had policies that would limit the ability to develop those housing units. So if you create policies that facilitate and expand housing development, you may get more more housing units. 3,500 units, though, is, you know, pretty, pretty large number. Right now, you know, the average per person household would likely change because if we actually achieve 3,500 units, probably the majority of those will be, you know, efficiency units, smaller units. And so you might have fewer people in them. But just to give you an idea, we have about, you know, 2.3 people per household, you know, roughly. And so, you know, 7,000 more people added to the to the population, you know, we're at close to 18 now. You know, that I give you a sense, you know, for for what a rapid expanse in in growth that would be. But I try and remind people that this is a 20 year plan, number one. Number two, the planning will not include maximum density. It'll include minimum densities. And so people may get creative with what they do with the density. And so total unit count may be different. So that's that's one element of it. But to address real specifically your points about the polytechnic, HSU is not planning on having all of its housing provided for in Arcata. They do think there's that and they're actually going to take leadership on producing housing through this new polytechnic phase. And they'll be actually building out housing in Arcata, McKinleyville and Eureka to support that that new student body. There's still going to be a a huge burden on the the private sector, though, to provide those housing units. And I I I think that's why I'm sort of raising the alarm bells and and saying that HSU is the elephant in the room at this point. There's going to be a huge demand for housing in the near future.
And regarding, sorry, one quickly, when do you expect that the polytechnic is actually going to be live? And this doubling of the total student body is actually going to occur?
I've seen their growth projections for the polytechnic. And they're they're pretty slow and steady pace to begin with. But they want to try and get back up to around the 7,500 mark within the first three years. 7,500 mark is about what the, you know, the max student body was in recent past. And so, you know, while we have a, you know, the added, you know, the pylon factor of, you know, COVID, work from home and, you know, you know, other climate refugees and and so on and so forth, that those are exacerbating the problem. You know, that the housing market has seen that kind of pressure before, 7,500 people. So, you know, I do think that there's, you know, it is going to create market pressure that that we'll need to respond to that the, you know, the the private sector will need to respond to. So to sum it up, the 3,500 units just in this area is the first piece of it. And then we're also going to be planning for, you know, for additional units outside of this area, recognizing once we've sort of mastered the process for doing higher density zoning in this area, week other areas, the Craftman's Mall area, the Valley West area, Safeway, Union Town Shopping Center, and a couple of other opportunity areas we've identified.
And David, I think we had some more hands that you just can't see. So we'll have to defer to the chair to.
Yeah, Judith has got a hand raised.
Yeah, I I I really like that you're looking at this in terms of challenges and opportunities. I hope that you're actually extending that analysis very specifically with the infill and with the gateway area on a site by site basis because that is the way to have a meaningful participatory process and some transparency in how the process is unfolding. And as far as the housing pressures associated with the polytechnico, I, you know, I don't, I and 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 I'm and I'm kind of saying this, I'm watching that process from HSU, both kind of as a little bit of an insider and as an outsider. You know, we've seen HSU plans for rapid expansion in the past. Many of you will recall that some of our our relatively recent plans figured that we'd have 12,000 students on campus around now just a few years ago. And and one of the things about the polytechnic plans are that that they're also going to be embracing possibilities for distance learning. And so not all of these students that the optimistic plans are looking at enrolling are necessarily going to be increasing our housing demands in Arcata. And I I think it's really important that the city work closely with HSU so that their expansion does not create a situation where they're they're in in effect pushing housing in Arcata beyond where we're ready to go on the schedule. And I know they're planning to develop some of this housing themselves. I know that that the foundation is actually, you know, bought the Craftman's Mall site. But if we assume that all of this housing housing expansion is going to be in effect for for students or efficiencies, we risk developing housing that may lack flexibility in the future. And I think that one of the big challenges across all of this is to maintain our very long term flexibility. The city can adapt to a variety of needs as they change if we do that and not to lock ourselves into a model that is dependent on a particular policy that this administration is 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 pushing for one institution. I I I guess gibberish gibberish means it's really important that the city and and university have a two way influence and dialogue and not a one way directive.
Yeah, absolutely. And I I do want to, don't want to leave the commission with the impression that this planning effort is designed around students. You may recall from earlier presentations, and I didn't emphasize it here, but we really are, you know, seeking a mixed tenure type development. So we'd like to be able to see ownership opportunities as well as rental opportunities. We'd like to see mixed income projects. So we'd like to be able to see projects where, you know, you don't know the person walking out the, you know, front door that they are low income just because of the building they're living in. And, you know, there are various opportunities for affordability by design. We see that in in micro units. And, you know, the the developer is able to increase the total unit count and and, you know, better facilitate, you know, operations in that manner. But I don't think that is a endless market. And I think that, you know, the the concept here is that, you know, the the market is much richer than just, you know, students. And and the market will provide for that as a result, result. I think those are really really good points, Vice Chair Mayor.
I'd like to ask briefly, do we have an assurance yet that this polytechnic is going through? I thought there was still some more border regions, final decisions. Where are we at in that?
Yeah, I would invite HSU to to come speak to the commission about the polytechnic. And I'll certainly do that. I don't want to speak for HSU. It's my understanding there are still some steps moving forward. But I think that the impression that I'm getting is that most of those steps are you know, somewhat procedural. But I'll certainly invite representative from HSU to come speak with the commission about the polytechnic. Oh, let's see, we may have a let's see. I'm going to get out of the presentation real quick here so we can take public comment. Do you mind if I just bring someone in who may be able to address that question immediately?
Yes, please.
Okay. Call in user two, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. It's Connie Stewart, Executive Director of Initiatives for Humboldt State University. I am listening in and I'm happy to answer any of your HSU related questions.
Anybody have any any commission questions for Connie Stewart? Connie, perhaps you could just tell us when there'll be a final, yes, this is a for sure phase that's going to happen.
We are still in the self study phase. We have just turned in another draft. Our final draft of the self study is due in September. We hope to be in front of the Board of Trustees to ask to become a polytech in early next year. And if so, we would get the designation in 2023. Regardless of whether we get the designation or not, we are going forward with building programs that will get us closer to being a polytech. So the technology and engineering programs that we are considering are moving forward regardless of the status. So I we want folks to understand the status is what we're going for, but we're still actively seeking new programs. As you all know, the governor has given us funding, which includes funding for housing developments on our existing sites. We are actively talking with the City of Arcata and the City of Eureka and the county about other locations. Our name is actually Humboldt State University, not Arcata State University. And so we are looking for partnerships outside the city to take care of our housing. But, you know, in addition to students, we, as David talked about earlier, have a significant workforce housing shortage in in our area. And so we hope the City of Arcata is considering the workforce housing needs, not only of of HSU, but healthcare is desperate right now for for additional housing. And I'm hearing from just about every industry. So why don't I stop there and ask if anybody has any other questions?
I'm not seeing any here, Connie.
Okay, thank you. I I'm going to go back into listening mode, but I'm happy if anybody has anything to chime in. Thanks.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks, Connie. I wish I'd have seen her text just before I said, I will invite a a member from HSU to to speak on this because then I would have looked really smart. You know, as a matter of fact, I have HSU waiting in the wings. Thank you so much, Connie, for for jumping to my rescue there. So at the risk of let's see, I'm going to pop this out actually in case there are other folks that want to raise their hand. And then I'll I'll go back to that list in case you want to take a look at that. And if it, you know, generates any thoughts or, you know, we could spend as much or as little time as you want on this. If you feel like, you know, hey, yeah, we're we're moving forward. These are the right target areas for challenges and opportunities. You know, we take that or we'll take as granular information as as you feel fit to provide. I believe Commissioner White has a question or comment.
I was just wondering if you had handy the presentation that you did for the Tropic and Public Play. I think it was on the
I don't have it at my disposal right now. And frankly, it's not ready for for a commission consumption. There are a couple, a couple of different processes that we're working through. And I'll explain those when we're ready to to bring that forward.
Okay.
In addition, we have some some circulation and traffic planning work that we've been doing with engineering and our consultant, who has a whole team of traffic engineers. And, you know, I'm anxious to bring that to you all. I know you all want to see it as well, but we've been doing a lot of work on, you know, both vehicular circulation and non-vehicular circulation that I'm, I'll be excited to share with you in the very near future.
There was also another portion that I believe there were like public amenities that developers could choose. I think there were like six. Is that something that you can pop up on the screen easily?
It's really not ready for public consumption right now. Yeah, so that, no, not at all. Let me just explain briefly what it is that you're referring to, the rest of the commission and the and the community. You may recall from earlier presentations that part of the concept here is that instead of going through a public review process where on every single project you go to, you know, eight or nine, ten, eleven committees, and have each committee say, well, we'd love it if you provide this, and we'd love it if you'd provide that, and then pretty soon the the project is overburdened with with conditions that makes it infeasible. If instead we said in advance, again, specific to this area, these are the amenities in this area, or these are the regional amenities associated with this area that, you know, we're going to want developers to provide. And so the concept is that we'll have that list of amenities as sort of checklist items that they'll need to submit for their building plans. And so, for example, you know, community desire for affordable housing in mixed-income projects has floated forward several times. That will be one of the amenities ultimately that gets into this plan. And so if you're willing to provide affordable housing in a certain mix in your your buildings, then you satisfy the requirement for for this principally permitted pathway, for example. And so we're still sorting through what that rubric would look like, you know, some amenities maybe rise to, you know, rise to the level where we would actually want to incentivize those. We'd provide you an added incentive if you provide this amenity. You know, one of the, you know, things that's been floated before is a public parking garage. It's heretofore been impossible for anyone to, you know, make a public parking garage pencil. But perhaps if you are allowed to, you know, build that public parking garage, that becomes a revenue source for you. You can actually charge for those parking spaces. And then in addition to that, you get, you know, levels, those don't add to, you know, the height limitation, so you get those levels free, if you will. That's an incentive that we would say, look, if you're going to provide a parking structure, and we need, you know, free throughout the region in the next twenty years, let's say we turn it, or this many parking spaces. That would be the kind of amenity that, you know, we might incentivize. And then other amenities would be, you know, just expected or required. And so right now, we've gone through a process over the last month with our committees to say, hey, you know, what is it that you want to see implemented in this area? You know, again, trying to concentrate the the policy in this area and concentrate the implementation of those policies and certain, you know, features that we would then add to the plan. And so over the course of the last month, we've gone through and had the committees give us some input. Staff is then going to, you know, digest that and create a recommendation for the Planning Commission to take a look at in relative near future. Unfortunately, that workload, that that body of work is not advanced enough to be able to share with the public at this point.
Thank you, David. Any other commission responses or questions on this list? I'd like to say that personally, as I've thought about this project based on that part of town, I think it's brilliant. That part of town does feel like it has tremendous opportunity for development, and I love that. I mean, it almost feels like it's further away than it is, but, you know, like your map showed so well, it it's all so close to downtown. And I I think it's just a great idea, great concept overall.
Awesome. Commissioner White?
I just wanted to echo the sentiment of the the live work opportunity for artists in the Gateway. I think that's going to be really exciting if our artists could actually afford to not only live in Arcata, but live in the community where they're creating art. So I'm really excited to see what that might look like.
Yeah, me too. We've, you know, conceptually talked about it for a number of years, and there's a couple of models out there. So I'm excited to be able to incorporate, you know, some 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 artist housing, some way to to make artist housing that's affordable as well. Well, that's all I have prepared for tonight, and I'm just going to double-check with Connie and see, I'm not sure she has her hand up again, or if this is from last time. Connie, did you want to talk again?
No, sorry, I just lowered my hand. My apology.
Okay, no problem. So yeah, if anybody has additional comments or thoughts or ideas you want us to carry for it, otherwise we'll bring it back. We have a little more work to share with you, and, you know, again, I'm super excited and looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you, Director Loya. Exciting stuff, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it again before too long. And I, it sounded like the commission was very interested to hear from HSU at some point about their growth plans. So that closes our business items for the evening, and we move on to correspondence and communications. Is there anything from the city on this?
Not at this time. I guess the only thing I'll mention, I'm sure you all know already, but the City Council did appoint Meredith Matthews as our our new council member. She replaces Sophia Pereira. And so we're we're up to full full council again with that appointment from last week. She should be sworn in at the next council meeting next Wednesday. So welcome her to the team.
Thank you. Are there any commission correspondence or communications? I have one quick question I'll throw out, David. Or this is to Dilo, perhaps. In terms of looking up the Housing Survey that you spoke of earlier, you, David, I think, said you can Google SERP, S-I-R-P. And I tried that, and it did not come up with the City of Arcata Housing Survey. So.
Yeah, if you can buy it. I'll answer for Dilo because I believe she's she's eating cake. We're all going to wish her father a collective happy birthday because she's she's actually enjoying some birthday time with her dad. So can you see my my browser? If you do, whoops, SERP, I'm sorry, S-I-R-P and Arcata together.
Okay. SERP Arcata.
It should be one of the top hits that you could.
Yeah, all right. So SERP Arcata. That was the mistake I made. I didn't include Arcata in that. All right, if there are no more correspondence and communications, we're done. Anybody? Okay, thank you all, and good night.
Thanks again for all your service, Dan.
Yeah, hope to see you all in person soon.